All right, then I'm in a, we are live on YouTube, so I'm gonna go ahead and.
Carrie, did you just say Brad has no audio?
I don't know if you guys have gotten muted or if he's fighting his own computer.
It's muted.
Anna?
Yes.
He's gonna disconnect and come back in.
Case number one is going first.
Okay, so you're gonna notify me when you get back on by phone then?
Yeah, I can text you.
Once, okay.
We're gonna do one first, not last?
Correct. For the hearing, we're gonna do one first. Okay, so let me share my screen. That way we can have the chair statement up. And when you're ready, Dave.
Good evening, everyone. We are meeting tonight under extraordinary circumstances. Our community, along with communities around the country and the world, have been observing social distancing and other health safety measures to slow the progress of the COVID-19 pandemic for many weeks. To allow normal or near-normal operations of city government functions, city government functions continue. The governor of New York has declared an emergency disaster emergency and has issued multiple executive orders. And the city of Rochester mayor has issued several local emergency orders, which together authorize the holding of this hearing virtually, subject to certain waivers of certain requirements to the New York State Open Meetings Law and the Rochester Zoning Code. In addition, at a prior meeting, we amended the planning commission rules and procedures to allow us to conduct this hearing as authorized by the governors and the mayor's emergency orders, and to waive other requirements to allow us to proceed with this hearing, as I will now describe. Primarily, these waivers involve the requirements for in-person attendance by commission members, staff, and the public at this hearing. The emergency orders permit us to hold this hearing by teleconference with no in-person attendance, allow applicant presentation by teleconference, and require all public comments, both in favor and opposed to the application, to be submitted in writing by email or by hard copy document mailed to the office, zoning office, or deposited in a secure Dropbox located in the link entrance of City Hall. These written public comments were all required to be submitted by 5:00 PM Friday, August 7. Although the conduct of this hearing has been altered from some of the normal procedures, many remain the same. All the normal notifications for this hearing, including mail notice, publication, and the posting of notice, were followed. A staff report has been prepared for each application. And that report, along with the application and other pertinent documents, have been presented to the commission members and have been posted online several days prior to tonight's hearing. All the above timeframes for the applicant presentations, comments in favor and in opposition to the application remain the same. Most importantly, this commission will hear, review, and make decisions about all applications with the same diligence and are using the same standards required by the zoning code. Before we begin, I would like to explain the ground.
David, this is Tom Worth at the Law Department. One thing that this statement doesn't cover, because we changed it a little bit since then, is the availability for people that make a reservation to participate live online. And so, Anna, could you describe that, like, right now, so that people understand?
Yep, no, this has been updated to include that, so right here and right here, Dave will get in.
Oh, okay, all right, I didn't see that, all right.
That, that's a. Okay, so, going back to the.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Before we begin, I'd like to explain the ground rules. Applications were posted on the city website at least a week ago and were available for public review. All applicants were advised to ensure that their applications were complete and included all information that they intend to present at tonight's hearing. As the application is presented, staff will staff will, as reasonably possible, identify and show the pages of the application that the applicant is addressing in the presentation. Following our normal procedure, commission members may ask the applicant questions about the application. After the applicant's presentation is completed, staff will read into record any comment that were submitted to the staff report was completed and posted on the city's website. First, in those, first those in support of the application, and then those in opposition. These comments will be limited to 10 minutes. If you represent, if you submitted by a neighborhood association, and three minutes for all of the comments. If reading the submitted written comments will exceed the time limit, staff will summarize the comments to fit within the timeframe. If multiple submissions are repeated of the same comments, staff will summarize those comments. Public comments that were received in time to be included in the staff will not be read into the hearing record. Public will also have an opportunity to register in advance to speak at this hearing. After these comments have been read, the applicant will have five minutes to offer any additional testimony and rebuttal. At the conclusion of the applicant's rebuttal testimony, the case will be closed. However, if the commission determines that substantial evidence, new evidence has been presented by the applicant during the hearing, if either during the original or rebuttal testimony case may be adjourned or held over to the commissioners' commissions' next announced hearing date in order to give the public an opportunity to review and comment on the new evidence. After completing all of the hearings and tonight's agenda, the commission may elect to take a short break, which will be announced. After the hearing break, hearing and break, if any of the commission will be commence deliberation and vote on all the applications, except for any applications that may have been adjourned to a future meeting day. Please note that if your case is approved today, a written decision will be mailed to you within 15 business days. Decision will inform you of the next steps to prove, to complete the process approval. Before we begin tonight's cases, please note that we are all volunteers, and we would like each of the commissioners to confirm their presence for the purposes of a roll call and establishing a quorum for the hearing and introduce themselves and mention what quadrant they're, in which they live. So we'll do it alphabetically?
Carrie Carroll, East District.
Brad, I think you're next.
Bradley.
Oh, I said apologies. I thought I unmuted. Brad Flower, South District, good?
Yep. O'Neal.
Thank you.
O'Neal Martin, Northwest.
Richard Mauser, Southeast.
Milton Picchardo, Northeast.
Eve Revelles, East District.
And Dave Watson, Southwest. Maybe you have a first case, please?
Case number one, file number M-01-20-21. The applicant is Linda Stango of the Rochester Housing Authority. The addresses are 17 to 19, 25, 29, 35, 37 to 39, 45 to 47, 51, and 55 to 99 Federal Street. The request is to amend the zoning map by rezoning the properties located at this, at 17 to 19, 25, 29, 35, 37 to 39, 45 to 47, 51, and 55 to 99 Federal Street, from R1 Low Density Residential to R2 Medium Density Residential, to facilitate the Rochester Housing Authority redevelopment project, an action requiring a city planning commission recommendation to the city council. And I have all of the planning commission members that are voting on this case have visited the site.
And, and just that Richard Mauser would be recusing himself from this item.
Ms. Stango? Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I will swear you in. Do you solemnly, do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, you may proceed.
I would like to introduce Sean Burr. He is the Deputy Executive Director of the Rochester Housing Authority. He's going to start the presentation.
So, Dave, it looks like we have a number of persons that are here to speak on case one should the need arise. So maybe we should do like a group oath swearing?
I will read that again, and then we'll have everybody to respond and give us your names as you respond. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. This is Sean Burr, Deputy Executive Director.
I do, Stephanie.
I, this is Jeff Perkins.
Jeff, you wanna go again? Is it you, Jeff?
Uh, yes, this is Jeff Perkins. I affirm, and I'm with Lero Engineers.
Stephanie Johnson, I affirm, engineer development consulting developer to RHA.
Geez, Zach.
Brett Garwood, I affirm as well. I'm from Home Leasing, the general contractor.
Rick Blanch with Lero Engineers, I affirm.
Right, anyone else? Okay, Ms. Stango, you can continue.
Thank you. Anna, will you be sharing the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, ma'am, I can do that for you right now.
Thank you. It'll just help keep me on, us on track.
The floor is all yours.
Sean, would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Commission, for allowing us to present tonight. We appreciate the time that you're taking to allow us this opportunity. RHA is very excited to continue our mission of changing the face of public housing, and this is projects that we hope to be very proud of. It's a, it's part of a larger project in the neighborhood, which will total 54 units, consisting of 27 two-bedroom units, 22 three-bedroom units, four, four-bedroom units, and one five-bedroom units. All in much need, according to our waiting list. RHA is, will be participating in HUD's Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. We have submitted an application prior and have been approved, and will be moving forward with that, with that. This project will create accessible and affordable housing that will be sustainable for a long time to come. The Federal Street component will involve the demolition of the eight currently vacant buildings. And in this place, we'll be constructing two low-rise buildings and a single-family home, and that will total 18 units, 16. We also have 36 units of scattered site housing in the, in the near area, and those will undergo various methods of rehabilitation or replacement. For the past years, we have had high occupancy rates at our properties. Excepting the Federal Street, it's been vacant as we've decided what to do with that site. And 52 of these units will receive rental assistance and be affordable to a person's earning zero to 50% of the AMI, and two of the units will be targeted to those earning 80% of the AMI. As, as you can see, it serves the lowest-income segment of our population in the city, and then we encourage, as always, neighborhood diversity and housing choice within our community. We're to remove the existing structures that no longer serve the needs of current residents and replacing them with, with energy-efficient and much more useful layouts, and as well as accessible units. There is no way we can put accessible units on that site now. Federal Street and the scattered sites will upgrade to extend the useful life, life as well as stabilize units within this Beechwood neighborhood, while furthering community revitalization goals, which have articulated in the City of Rochester 2034 Comprehensive Plan and the Connected Community with Neighborhood Plan. We have a rough timeline of of project completion around June, April to June of 2023, with various stages. Estimated cost for this project would be about $15 million, with about $3.4 million estimated for the Federal Street portion. We are applying for low-income housing tax credits and other New York State HCR financing for this project, and the deadline for that supplemental is August 26, rapidly approaching. We're requesting a rezoning to R2 meet current zoning requirements. We are requesting that the CPC make a positive recommendation to city council so we can move the project forward. Again, thank you for your time. I'll now introduce Lynn, who's already been introduced, but she can take over with the PowerPoint from here.
Lynn, you're muted.
I'm muted.
Myself. Okay, how's that? Thanks for the introduction, Sean. And if you could go a slide forward? Or, yeah, um, this is, I know everyone had had a chance to drive by the property. And as you can tell, it really, there's eight buildings on the site right now, and there are 16 units on the property. It's just under an acre of land. We started with the idea that we would do a renovation project, and when we started to do the calculations of how expensive it would be to do, we really, you know, realized that we weren't getting a lot of the things that we wanted out of it. So, for example, there, when you walk in the apartment, you go down half a level to the living space. It was a living, a dining, a kitchen area, and then upstairs to two or three bedrooms and the bathroom. No matter what we did, it would be very, very difficult and prohibitively expensive to make any of these units accessible. And one of the largest demands we have at RHA are for accessible units. So the decision was made to demolish and rebuild. We are going to use the HUD's RAD conversion, which means that these house units will no longer be public housing, but they'll switch to the Section 8 platform. And then realizing the amount of money that it would cost to do, we expanded the project to include the scattered sites, you know, around the neighborhood that Sean was speaking about. The other thing that we did was we were very conscientious of including the neighborhood and the neighborhood association and the neighbors just to the south of us. Obviously, this affects their, you know, property as well. We, you know, met with Emma back in July, just to have a one-on-one conversation. We also held a meeting at RTS with the help of Nancy Jones Price that had Beechwood there, Emma Ace. And we really, we went through the project, you know, what we were proposing, and we did receive a lot of, you know, feedback. And we were asked to attend the Beechwood Neighborhood Meeting in September of last year. Two of the primary changes that we incorporated into the plan were reducing the number of units, believe it or not. We started out with three buildings on the site with 27 units, multifamily units, and then the one single family. We reduced it to two buildings and kept the single family. The other major change to the plan is we relocated the single family to the north side of the property so that it makes the transition to the houses on Cedarwood a little bit more, you know, more appropriate than a larger building. And it enabled us not to overdevelop the site. And we appreciate, you know, all the, the input that we've given. We did send out letters to the neighbors to the south of us, because obviously this rezoning affects their property as well. I did have conversations with three owners there. One was, you know, a lot of issues about parking, which you can read in the staff report. And one was, you know, like, well, why does this have to affect me? I mean, that's the way the ordinance is written. I can't, you know, change it, because the zoning does want to be continuous all the way, you know, down to East Main Street. We, the, the other major component is that we will be making, in addition to having accessible units, we will also have more energy-efficient units. Right now, that it's very hard to control the temperature and the comfort level of that lower level. It's a slab on grade, it'd be low grade. So it's either too cold, it damp, it just doesn't lend itself to easy regulation. So with that, I'd like to ask Jeff Perkins to speak about the actual site plan and what we're working on. And if you could forward a couple of slides, Anna, that would be great. Yeah, this will be good. Perfect.
Thanks, Lynn. And so I've been working for Lero Engineers, and we have engineers and architects on the team for the design of this Federal Street project. And when we were interviewed initially, Sean had asked us, you know, what do you think about affordable housing and making it so it feels nicer, it looks nicer to the residents? Not only in the dwellings that we're proposing, but in the surrounding everybody. So Linda and Sean have both challenged us with coming up with a great-looking, as best we can, great-looking within the price range, housing product that would make sense for future development. So a lot of the positives that I've got written down here, Linda and Sean have already indicated. But first and foremost, you know, we're not looking to still change the use of the existing site. It's just refined, so it's cleaner, you know, newer and more efficient in many respects. One of the efficiencies is reducing the overall number of buildings. So we took the apartments and condensed them into two buildings rather than several other buildings. We tried to, if you go down to the next slide, you'll see architecture. Okay, so, so what we did with the look at the building, rather than it looking like a, you know, a quote-city-type building that looks rectangular, we used something that looks a little more like a home. And, you know, that's from, from an architectural standpoint, we believe it blends in better with the adjacent neighborhoods. We're, you know, we wanted to put porches on it so that there is some, you know, that has an element of inviting, so people will want to integrate with the, with the neighborhood. It was said earlier, they were looking at energy-efficient facilities, and we're looking at a variety of different energy efficiencies, and maybe Rick can, not at this moment, but there's questions on that. We've got Rick Blanch with our firm from mechanical, electrical, plumbing side to answer those specific questions. From the construction standpoint, we're also looking at meeting or exceeding the minority and women-owned business goals to make sure that, you know, comply with the Section 3 requirements and the home and HUD requirements as well. It was said earlier, but we are adding five accessible units to the property. We're adding a playground. If you go back one slide, you can see the, you can see the playgrounds are proposed in the back, whether it's one or, or one larger one or two separated, you know, we're open to that. Within one of the dwellings, we're gonna put a community room so that the residents have a place to gather and have celebrations or what have you. Sean had indicated this is a sizable investment, very large in the neighborhood at large, but for this area, we're looking at $3.4 million investment for this site. And we wanted to connect it to the Main Street R2. That's good planning, because in the bottom of the photo or immediately west of Federal Street is the RTS bus facility, and that's zoned as C2. And good planning, you would normally have a transition set of zoning before you go to R1, and this strip would make a good transition set. So, any questions? All right. Sean, I give back to you if you want to.
Or we could just go to questions, then. David, I think you're muted.
I'm sorry. So we will go to questions. Any questions for the applicant from the commission?
This is Carrie Carroll. I have a bunch of questions, actually.
Yes.
So, looks actually like a cool project. I'm generally pretty positive about it so far. I just want to clarify some of the actual numbers around what's being demolished, what's being built, and so forth. So you're demolishing eight two-family units, so a total of 16 units. And you are creating essentially 18 units, one single family, and then 17 additional in those two multifamily buildings. Is that accurate?
I believe it's 17 units, but.
Yes, it's 17 in the two larger buildings, and then one single family on the corner. So it's 18.
So 17 between the two multifamily. And there is a community room within the multifamily, so that's why the 17 seems like an odd number, but the community room takes up some space. No, that makes perfect sense. So there's basically a net adding of a single unit, well, two units to this project. But I'm not really counting the single-family house, because it's got its own driveway and garage, and parking and traffic seems to be the biggest concern about most of the folks in the area. So we're not really adding, in the grand scheme of things, additional units. We're changing the units that are there. So on the new layout, it looks like there's a parking lot that is adding 14 parking spaces. And when I looked on Google Earth, it looked like the existing parking lot has nine. So there's actually a net gain of five spaces. Is that accurate?
No, the existing parking on the site, there are two parking lots for a total of 15 spaces.
Okay.
That serve those 16 units, and the new plan, we're planning on 18 spaces for those 17 units.
Okay, so we're essentially net neutral on parking. It's one extra unit, but extra spaces. And with the five ADA units, do you have any experience about whether folks with ADA apartments typically drive? Or do they have handicapped vehicles that require handicap spaces? Let me, I think it shows that we do have, I believe, four handicap parking spaces there, already identified within the parking lot. We're required to do that by New York State HCR and code so that we have made the appropriate number of parking spots so far. Perfect. Okay, and then the last question I had was about where is snow removal going in the big parking lot?
You would be pushing it straight back to either side of the dumpster location?
Okay, in between the dumpster and the tree type thing?
Yeah.
Correct. Perfect. That's actually all my questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Any other questions for the commission? Any other questions?
Carrie got all mine. Thanks, Carrie.
I guess I have a couple. The two areas behind both the major buildings, I can't read what those are identified as being. Could you explain what they are?
So we had planned those to be small playground areas, where the plan is to have two different age group type facilities so that, you know, you've got, you're catering to, you know, a large group of children versus just one small group. So we're, could be one for, I don't know, two through seven, and then eight through. So we're, could be one for, I don't know, two through seven and then eight through 15 or something like that. But we're planning on doing something along those lines where you've got enough playground recreational space for the kids to play.
Okay. And then last question, is there a garage on the single, single house? Or just a driveway?
So we made provision in the civil plan to put a garage there. We're not sure if HCR would fund one. So what we wanted to do is, from the site planning perspective, state that either one would be there or be constructed new or planned in the future, right at least have that placeholder. So I think the current plan shows it just as a placeholder. But we want to be able to, from the site planning perspective, be allowed to put a garage.
Okay.
Yeah, New York State does not pay for garages, unfortunately, period. So we do want to allow the option if there's a way to do it later with other funding sources.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. That's all the questions I have. Any other questions? Hearing none? This case is closed. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, gentlemen.
We have some public comments.
Matt, do you know if our?
Yep, I'm going to promote them to panelists right now. You're awesome.
So who do we have first?
Kyle and Kimberly.
Kyle, would you like to start us off since you're representing a neighborhood association?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Assuming everyone can hear me. My name is Kyle Crandall. I'm the president of the Beechwood Neighborhood Coalition. And I know for those of you who have been on the Planning Commission for a while, you may be shocked to hear that Beechwood is standing here to support this change in zoning and to support this project as we have worked very hard to downzone most parts of our neighborhood over the years. However, what I want to, what I want to share with the Planning Commission is the relationship that we have had with the Rochester Housing Authorities throughout this project. When they indicate the public meetings that they had, those are absolutely accurate. But in addition, they, I believe, presented to Beechwood one other time and did have a presentation to our board just recently during this pandemic time as well, looking to include as much public input as they absolutely possibly could. And if we showed, if we were to go back and show you what the original design was, the very first time it was presented publicly, to where this project stands now. To me, I just can't speak enough of the appreciation for RHA taking public input into consideration. For Beechwood, one of our big things that we are battling right now is development without displacement. How do we actually develop our neighborhood without displacing our current residents? We have seen rents in some, in some units in our neighborhood almost double in the last four to five years. So being able to provide quality, affordable housing to a segment of our community that desperately needs it is extremely important. That's one of the things that we really want to champion with this project. We also want to champion the fact that, I can't think, in Planning Commission, think of all of the proposals that you've had before you. Where have you seen the Housing Authority come to you and also offer a single family on the same site? As, 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 you know, seeing 17 units that are there for affordable housing. So these are some things that were really important to us. As it relates to the actual zoning, Beechwood is, of course, supportive of the Rochester 2034 Comprehensive Plan and the Connected Communities Plan. We felt we have had very valuable inputs into the zoning components of the Comprehensive Plan as well as the components of the Connected Communities Plan as well. The contiguous zoning is something that, you know, I think there are going to be times when it could cause a little bit of friction and a little bit of problems. And this may be one of those scenarios. So Beechwood stands behind the, we stand behind the need, I guess, to have to go ahead and change the zoning of all of those properties. If you take a look at this project, though, I understand that it would kind of be a scattered site. But there are some single family homes from East Main Streets to, to the proposed sites of, well, where RHA has had affordable housing for, you know, a few decades. So we would not be opposed if the Planning Commission did make a decision to only change the zoning for that particular site. But we also support the need to have to change all of it in order to see this project take place. But if that does become a sticking point with some of the current owners in that stretch, you know, we'll allow you to make that tough decision, but we do, we do support overall this change in zoning. The accessible units are really important to us. Again, originally, when this came to us, it was 27 units. To see this now down to what we think is going to be much more manageable and really fit in with the neighborhood, we think is a real plus. I will also share that the neighborhood, our neighborhood association was really supportive and advocated for those two play areas. We think that those are really important to have both of those play areas in the back. The concerns that you may hear regarding, regarding the need for off-street parking are legitimate concerns. I don't want to underestimate or undermine those concerns. As someone who drives down Federal Street on a daily basis, there are, there is a significant amount of clutter with some of the cars that are there. However, I believe that the 18 parking spaces that this project is proposing should meet the need of, of the residents and of this site. And, you know, there's nothing that RHA can do to mitigate some of the parking concerns that currently exist on Federal Street. I know that very soon, I think, we could be seeing the next phase for the RTS and seeing that wall relocated a little bit. That may be a time when we could possibly see a little bit of street redesign there that would help mitigate some of the current parking concerns that are there on Federal Street. But again, the Beechwood Neighborhood Coalition does not believe that this project will grossly contribute to the parking concerns on Federal Street due to all of the off-street parking that currently exists. We also are very supportive of the green initiatives that RHA is putting into this project. We have advocated, and I know that RHA is still hearing this request. We did not have a chance to iron this out, but there was also a request for maybe some heat pumps to be able to be used on this project as well. But what I, again, just want to say is that on behalf, and for those of you that aren't familiar with the Beechwood Neighborhood Coalition, I just want to make sure that all, all of the members realize that when I come and speak, it's not what Kyle Crandall thinks. It is a fully democratic process. And you can ask the members of RHA what they had to go through when they do present to Beechwood. Because what we really want to do is have our whole community hear the proposal. We have a 14-person elected board who then hears from members of the community. And then we deliberate as a 14-person board. And this particular project with our letter of support was, was passed and approved unanimously by our Board of Directors. So that shows the strong support from the Beechwood Neighborhood Coalition. And again, we could not ask for a more, an organization to come and really value the input of the neighborhood more than RHA has done. And I'm convinced the couple remaining issues that we need to get through, we will be able to get through those. So unless anyone has any questions for me, I want to thank you for your time. And I certainly hope that we can move forward because what's proposed for the site is going to be a whole lot better than what currently exists and sits on that site now. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
We've got one more for you all. So Kim, when you are ready.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Russell and live at 72 Charlotte Street in Center City Rochester. Like all of you, I love our city and am working to improve our community. I lived downtown for 23 years and have been involved in community development, wearing various hats for the last seven. Tonight, I'm before you as a city resident advocating for the CPC to recommend the proposed zoning map amendment to council. I'm a member of the Connected Communities Housing Committee. Our committee membership includes resident ambassadors, local landlords, RHA, Habitat, the City of Rochester, City Roots Land Trust, Greater Rochester Housing Partnership, ESL Trail Foundation, and others. Our committee collaborated and contributed to the creation of the Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan for the Beechwood and Emma Ace neighborhoods, guided by Interface Studios, the same consultants that put together Josanna's plan nearly a decade ago. Neighborhood residents were involved every step of the way. Now more than ever, the demand for quality, affordable housing exists. I'll be back in a second. RHA has thousands of people on its waiting list eligible for Section Eight vouchers. Providing decent, affordable housing options helps address some of the systemic racial disparities that are a consequence of our city's historic policies of redlining, exclusionary zoning, and restrictive covenants. Warfield Square and the Emma Ace neighborhood serves as precedent for the proposed map amendment. That change, approved by council nearly five years ago, allowed for the creation of 72 units of housing, now housing over 100 residents. This area is well-served by transportation options and community services. Warfield Square is only two blocks away from these sites and is the site of the Connected Communities offices. We all know that building quality housing is expensive and takes years to develop. The higher density permitted by shifting from R1 to R2 zoning reduces the per-unit construction cost and allows more units to be constructed to house the residents RHA serves. The design has been informed by significant community engagement and fits in well with the surrounding neighborhood. This is our collective first opportunity to begin to realize the vision for a healthy, vital community laid out in the neighborhood plan. I encourage you to recommend the proposed zoning map amendment to council. Thank you.
So we just heard from two members of the public who opted in to provide their verbal testimony. Now we are going to read in the comments that were written and received after the publication of the staff report. And I will be doing that. So the first one we have is from Shane Wiegand of 381 Rosewood Terrace, Rochester, New York 14609. Dear Mr. Watson, I am a resident in the Beechwood neighborhood. I serve on the Board of Connected Communities and the Beechwood Neighborhood Coalition. I am fully in support of RHA's project on Federal Street moving forward, including rezoning from R1 to R2. This fits directly in with the Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan that I've been an active participant in creating. We want safe, affordable housing in our neighborhood and see the work RHA is doing as crucial to making Beechwood an even better place to live. Next, we have Maureen Dugan. To the City Planning Commission, I am writing in support of the above RHA project. This project is an important component of the recently adopted Connected Communities-led neighborhood plan. Working with partners to ensure that a more affordable, attractive, safe housing is available for residents of Emma and Beechwood is a key component of our holistic work. The Federal Street and Scattered Site Project will add good housing units to the catchment and need identified in the Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan. As Connected Communities continues to work to support residents and fight racism, we ask for your help in approving this project. So next, I'm going to read the comments that were in opposition of the staff report. And these are the ones that were received after the staff report publication. Any comments that were received in advance of the staff report publication are included as an attachment to that document and is available online. The first one is from Christopher Rhodes at 17 to 19 Federal Street. Hello, my name is Christopher Rhodes. I am the owner occupant of 1719 Federal Street, Rochester, New York 14609. I'm submitting my comments and opinion on the R2 rezoning plan for the area, including the properties on Federal Street, which includes 17 to 19, 25, 29, 35, 37, to 39, 45, 47, 51, and 55 to 99. I am and have been a resident in the inner-city community of Rochester for several decades. I am all for the reconstruction of neighborhoods for improvement and the providing of safe, affordable homes in our community. I believe RHA does a good job maintaining their properties and providing affordable housing for families. But I oppose to the rezoning plans of this area. Although the RHA plans include 18 onsite parking spots for the residents on its property, 5599 Federal Street, adding 18 more families to the area will increase traffic flow and call for more on-street parking for the families, friends, and visitors of those residents in the RHA homes, 55 to 99. Federal Street is a small, two-way street with alternate parking that can be tough to navigate through when cars are parked on both sides of the street. Parking is worse in the winter and during holidays when families have visitors and/or functions at the residence. I would like to see some type of solution to accommodate the additional traffic and parking that will come with the R2 rezoning to medium density and additional families wants to RHA homes open. I oppose to the R2 rezoning project plans as it is written at this time and would like to see some type of solution to the parking for the entire street. Thank you. Next, we have Roberta Deertagert at 35 Federal Street. When I first heard of this proposal, it was for a single-family homes, and now it's two apartment buildings. The first idea was agreeable, but apartment buildings are not. This is a small, narrow street that does not need any more parking or speeding cars. The alternate parking is not always adhered to and it can make driving down or up the street difficult. I realize the proposed apartment complex has a parking space, but there will be an overflow onto the street from visitors or workmen, and we have enough parking issues. The street has speeding issues and extra traffic from cars, avoiding the traffic light on East Main Street and Culver. We have lost pets and wildlife because people are always in a hurry. I dread the day it will be someone's child. Recently, a car was speeding towards Main Street, jumped the curb, bounced off the first house, and hit the neighbor's porch. My family has lived on this street since the 1940s. There have been many changes and the five homeowners are not agreeable to this and the changes an R2 could bring. Unlike other streets around us, we do not have stabbings and shootings. More people bring more issues. Next, we have a comment from Carol Calamia of 283 Breck Street. With regard to the proposed rezoning of 17 to 19, 25, 29, 35, 37, to 39, 45, to 47, 51, and 55 to 59 Federal Street, I hereby submit the following. With all due respect to the members of the committee, I submit the following. One, this hearing is a sham in so much as it is commonly understood that the mayor has stripped the commission of any meaningful participation in the planning of projects in the city. Since the commission has had its hands tied and cannot provide the necessary checks and balances to the planning process, I object to the proposed rezoning. Two, the area you are considering rezoning is part of a largely one-family housing neighborhood. It also constitutes some of the most affordable housing in the city. These homes provide an entry point for those who are considered low-income into homeownership. Removing these homes from our housing stock would be a travesty. Therefore, I object to the proposed rezoning. Three, other medium-density housing of this type, this rezoning would make it possible. In this area is a disaster. Warfield Square has never achieved anything close to full occupancy. The basement floods constantly despite the addition of four sump pumps in the basement. The water table in the area simply cannot support any type of dense building. When it was less than one year old, Warfield Square had significant roof leaks. Warfield Square does not serve the purpose that was stated as its inception and continues to be a neighborhood nuisance. Therefore, I object to the proposed rezoning. Four, given that we are still, for all intents and purposes, in the middle of a shutdown here in New York, the city might find it more useful to fix the damage done by the peaceful protesters to buildings in the downtown area. Cannot simply be a Chamber of Commerce dream to have to try to bring people and businesses here while our downtown, including new buildings finished under the IJIS of Mayor Warren, look like downtown Ferguson. Therefore, I object to the proposed rezoning. Five, as a result of the massive loss of business here in Rochester under the shutdown, we would all be better served if a survey of empty buildings able to be renovated to meet the needs of the city be conducted. Reclaiming and reusing is far better use of our resources than putting a new building on a Brownfield site. Therefore, I object to the proposed rezoning. And then last, we have Jamie Somersall of 25 Federal Street. I do oppose a proposed rezoning. We are already struggling for parking in Federal Street. Sometimes parking on East Main Street and having to walk home, especially on Fridays and Saturdays, as it seems like the houses down the street that are multi-unit seem to have many visitors on those days. I understand that there would be a parking lot included in your proposal. However, I doubt it would be enough. However, I doubt it would be enough for residents and their visitors. Should this project come to fruition, I at least ask that you would consider removing the alternate parking. As the evenings we have to park on our side of the street, the driveways take about half of the spots. I also noticed the houses with rental units are always full of trash all over the street out front. We are already not looking forward to the possibility of seeing more of that. Thank you for your consideration. And that concludes the public comments that were received after the publication of the staff report.
Thank you. So that means that we can...
Now, the applicant has the opportunity to rebut.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just a couple of notes. As Mr. Crandall alluded to, the parking situation exists before, you know, the project is there. And we feel we're going to provide enough parking spaces for that site as we had when the other site was occupied. But I think the important point to note is that we've been more than happy to work with the residents in the community and the city in addressing those concerns as related to the project, because that will only help our residents out as well. So, and it seems to be the biggest concern here as far as the project goes. So, I thank you all for your time. I appreciate you taking the time as volunteers, and I hope you'll see it to move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, we will close this case, and maybe have the next case, please?
Sure thing. I also want to give the member who accused themselves a few seconds to catch up.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like Richard has joined us. Case number two, file number M dash zero-two dash twenty dash twenty-one. The applicant is Chris Whitman of Park Place Automotive LLC. The addresses for this one are six-six-three, six-six-five, six-six-seven, six-six-nine, six-seven-one, six-seven-three, six-seven-nine, six-nine-five, six-nine-seven, seven-oh-one, seven-oh-three, and seven-oh-five, seven-fifteen Culver Road. The request is to amend the zoning map by rezoning the properties located at six-six-three, six-six-five, six-six-seven, six-six-nine, six-seven-one, six-seven-three, six-seven-nine, six-nine-five, six-nine-seven, seven-oh-one, seven-oh-three, and seven-oh-five, seven-fifteen Culver Road from R2 Medium Density Residential to C2 Community Center to facilitate the Park Place Automotive redevelopment project, an action requiring a City Planning Commission recommendation to the Rochester City Council.
Is Mr. Whitman there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I will swear you in. Is there anyone else that will be testifying?
This is Doug McCord. I will be. I believe the owners, Chris and Ron Whitman, might also be joining us.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, what I'll do, I'll swear you in, and then all you respond by giving us your name, so we have that for the record, and then we can start the hearing. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you are about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Chris Whitman, yes. Ron Whitman, yes.
Doug McCord, yes.
And was there anyone else?
That's it.
That's it, okay. You may continue.
So, Chris, would you like me to start?
Yes, would you please, Doug?
Okay. My name is Doug McCord from McCord Landscape Architecture, and we submitted the plan for this project. It's just the one sheet. It shows the site plan and the proposed properties to be rezoned. And I know it was part of the package that Anna sent to me, and it looks like it's also part of your package, so that's great. Thank you, Anna. And thank you for allowing us to present tonight, and we appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you so much.
The nine properties, can you see my pointer? Probably not. I guess not.
But I'll try to do my best Vanna White impressionation.
Okay, so the properties we're under consideration are between the Gulf station at the corner. It's a Gulf mini-mart and gas station, so that's zoned M1 Industrial. To the north of that is a, what was a single-family home, and for the past few years has been a restaurant, a Jamaican food restaurant. I was over there the other day, and I noticed their sign is now down. And so I don't know what happened just in the past couple of months. Maybe the pandemic shut them down temporarily or something. Just north of that property is a duplex residential apartment. The owner, I believe, occupies that building. And north of that is the property owned by Mr. Whitman, Chris Whitman and Ron. And that is six-seventy-one, six-seventy-three Culver Road. They also own the one just north of that. That's called Lot G, and that is where the business itself is located, the building where the auto repair is done. And that's the Park Avenue, Park Place Automotive. Just north of that, the three properties that you see are all owned by Mr. Bob Swetman. He, as well as all of the rest of the owners of the properties, except for one, which we were not able to locate, have signed the petition to have their properties rezoned. And that's the property just on the north end there at the corner of Leighton Ave and Culver. We weren't able to get a signature from that owner. And we're still waiting to try and find out where we can get that signature if it's needed. And so let me just go through. I know you've got a pretty complete package there, and I'm not going to really add anything new to that, but I'll go over the highlights of the submission. We started this process in September of last year. And I know someone earlier, I tuned in at five o'clock, and there was a note, a comment about, well, can we, is this used grandfathered in? Because we have been there for, the use of the property has been there for, we believe, at least twenty years. Mr. Whitman has owned the property for about three years, and so he bought it from the previous, the owner of the auto establishment. And it was similar to the use of the property for the past twenty years, and it really hasn't changed in use. So, we were told by staff, Tom Kessier, to be precise, that our only option to legalize that use on the property, the auto repair, is the route that we're taking right now to rezone the property. And Mr. Whitman was issued a ticket for the use of the property for a non-illegal use. And so that's what started all this, and where we stand today is to make the use of the property legal, we need to rezone.
Yeah, I'm just going to interject real quick to clarify. So, the building and the property is legal, but you guys are proposing a little bit of an expansion here onto the other two properties. And so this zoning map amendment would afford the ability to make those, that, the expansion, legal.
Yeah, and actually, the citation was for the parking along the south side.
Yeah, so the expansion, so, yeah, for the project-specific expansion will include some additional parking, which would potentially be reviewed at a later date. But that's kind of, that gets into the more of the nitty-gritty of the legalization component of things.
Thank you.
Great. And then I would just like to add, the parking is actually already there. And there has been parking on that property to this, directly to the south, for, to the south. On that property for years, the same number of years. However, you're right, that's a separate property. It was never added to the the auto repair property. And so that's what we're going to be doing as part of the site planning process, is combining those two properties as well as the property to the north, a fifty-foot section of Mr. Swetman's property. And so we'll have about a hundred and forty linear feet of frontage, once this is complete. The parking that you're seeing on that property is actually already there also. That is currently a gravel parking lot. It would be paved and improved, and we're adding landscaping along that side and along the frontage. And as well as on the south side, we're adding some landscaping there to screen the parking. We have discussed the project and met with the Ace Neighborhood Association and the president, Sunshine Jacobs, of that group. And they were favorable towards the project and sent us an email to that effect. And that should be, and I think she recently sent a note just before this meeting as well, but that, the first meeting we had with them was back in February, and they voted in favor of the project with the condition that we add some landscaping, which we did do. We added landscaping to the project, and I don't know if you have that plan or if it's even necessary to look at it at this point, but we've tried to accommodate those folks with the additional landscaping. We also met with the folks from the Neighborhood Association directly to the east. Not sure the name of that group, Wynton Merchants Neighborhood Association. And the project isn't in their neighborhood, but we met with them anyway, and they were in favor of the project and voted as well for it. We did receive signatures, like I said earlier, from all of the owners. Mr. Swetman, who owns three of the properties, actually one, because they were subdivided together just recently. And now, like I said earlier, he's giving, subdividing back a fifty-foot section of his property back to Mr. Whitman, who will be buying it from him and then combining it with this property. I hope all that makes sense. We did do a parking demand analysis. I know that's more of the site planning aspect of the approvals that we need to get for this project. But the parking is, like I said, it's there. It's existing and has been for a number of years. And it is more than what you would typically have for a business, mainly because it's an auto repair business. So we have people coming early in the morning. They drop off their vehicles. Some of those vehicles do stay for more than one night, and so they'll be parked there for a couple nights occasionally, and we need that because of the turnover that happens during the day. That's why we need that many parking spaces. I know that question will come up eventually. I didn't get to the zoning to the north, but across the street from Leighton Avenue, if you could point to that, Anna, that is commercial zoning. And from that point north is more commercial zoning. And so the pink there, C2. So what we're doing is connecting the C2 zoning to the north with the M1 zoning to the south. And, right, thank you for a continuous, continuously zoned area, I guess you could say. The, correct me if I'm wrong, Anna, but I believe we fit into the placemaking plan that you sent over. And we have neighborhood mixed-use uses to the north as well as to the south. And further to the south is Sticky Lips. I'm sure you're familiar with that part of the street. And this would connect the two neighborhood mixed-use areas. And so I'm thinking that would help with the place-making plan as well. That's what I wanted to say. We did talk with Mary Lupien, the new councilwoman, city council, and she's in favor of the project. And we have an email that I sent in also in that regard. And, Chris, is there anything you'd like to add?
So I guess, you know, I would just like to add that I own Merwin Auto Service, which is at the corner of Wynton Merchants, which is actually a very similar business to Park Place. I've been there since nineteen eighty-three. It was actually my grandfather's in the fifties, and my son, Ron, would be the fourth generation. We have a very good standing with the North Wynton Village Association, the community. They support us tremendously. We would do the same thing up here, and my son, his worth ethic is just as mine is. So I think it would be a benefit to the community.
And so are there any questions about the application at this point?
All right, thank you, gentlemen. So are there any questions for the applicant? Any questions for the applicant? Seeing that there are none, thank you, gentlemen.
Well, thank you so much, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
And you can, Anna, do we have any testimony for this case?
Nope, there's no testimony, none spoken or none written. There were three comments that were received, but those were included with the staff report and are available online, so that's it.
Well, that being said, we will close this case, and we'll have the next case, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Case number three, file number M dash zero-three dash two-zero dash two-one. The applicant is Fay Gilmore of Rock Re Incorporated. The addresses are fifteen nineteen twenty-three forty-one and forty-five Sherer Street, sixty-eight seventy-four seventy-eight eighty-four eighty-eight, and one oh-six Craig Street. The request is to amend the zoning map by rezoning the properties located at fifteen nineteen twenty-three forty-one and forty-five Sherer Street, sixty-eight seventy-four seventy-eight eighty-four eighty-eight, and one oh-six Craig Street, from R1 Low Density Residential to M1 Industrial, to align the zoning map with the existing land uses. An action requiring a City Planning Commission recommendation to the Rochester City Council. And I'd like to go on record saying that all present commissioners have visited the site.
Thank you. Is Fay Gilmore there?
Yes, I am.
Fay, are you the only one presenting this evening?
Yes.
Okay, I will swear you in. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you are about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, you may proceed.
Good evening, board members. My name is Fay Gilmore, and I'm with Rock Re Incorporated. Rock Re Incorporated is the owner of properties at fifteen nineteen forty-one and forty-five Sherer Street. We're here on behalf of the Rock Re Properties on Sherer Street, as well as some of the other properties in the neighborhood, to request the properties be rezoned from R1 to M1 and to bring the properties into line with the City of Rochester's twenty thirty-four placemaking plan. Rock Re Incorporated is making application to bring the zoning of these and the surrounding addresses listed on the application into line with the City of Rochester. into line with the City of Rochester's 2034 placemaking plan. These properties are currently or have been in the past used for res, excuse me, for industrial purposes. As you can see via the photos that were provided with this application for rezoning. The majority of the properties requested for rezoning are not being used and are one way. These properties consist of a couple houses, vacant paved lots and industrial buildings, all currently zoned R1. Bolstering that is the fact that the City of Rochester's 2034 placemaking plan calls for these specific properties that are here before you now to be rezoned to M1. The rezoning to M1 is to put the properties in line with their current use in the City of Rochester's 2034 placemaking plan. The application for rezoning is adhering to the City of Rochester's 2034 placemaking plan to bring the zoning in line with the uses in the area. The Sherer Street Craig Street area is located in an already industrialized area directly off Maple Street with convenient short travel distance to Mount Reed Boulevard and Expressway Route 490. If the board has any questions, I can attempt to answer them, but the best information that I have is in the documentation. I'm really not privy, privy to additional information other than what's written before you in the documentation. Thank you, board members, for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, any questions for the applicant? Any questions for the applicant at this time? Hearing none? We will wait, see if we have any testimony that has been received before we close the case.
Yeah, so I'm going to read the one written comment that was received after the publication of the staff report. This was sent to the planning commission members in advance of this hearing. The, there were no other comments that were included with the publication of the staff report.
Thank you.
So here's the one. One second. Here we are. And this is from Joseph Santa Cross. He is at 23 Sherer Street. I am requesting the following questions to be answered at the public hearing. How is this beneficial to the neighborhood and what kind of impact will this have for neighbors? For redevelopment, I would strongly express what exactly are their plans, such as buildings and certain setbacks with the land use and how it will affect neighboring property owners. I worry about overcrowding issues and parking issues with redevelopment and would like that to be addressed more in detail. And how is this benefiting the people that are requesting the change? Almighty, I ultimately, I would like to see something that enhances and beautifies Sherer Street and be beneficial to the City of Rochester and the neighborhood. There we have it. That was the one.
Okay, the applicant may have an opportunity to rebut or provide some information if you wish.
Um, yes, thank you. These properties are currently and have mostly been used as industrial. This rezoning would put the properties into compliance with their existing use in the City of Rochester's 2034 placemaking plan. As far as impact, there should be no noticeable difference. The properties are not changing from their current use. And we are not here to propose buildings to be constructed, just simply to bring these properties into compliance with their existing use and into line with the city's 2034 placemaking plan. Regarding the the last comment slash question, that might be answered in the future when someone brings forward an application for construction. Of course, any construction would come before the city boards and would have to comply with the M1 zoning as well as any required setbacks, parking, lot coverage, et cetera. And I believe that answers the four questions this person had. So thank you again, board members.
Thank you so much. With that, we will close this case. Maybe have the next case, please, Anna.
Case number four, file number E dash 36 dash 19 dash 20. The applicant is Lillian Forte of the City of Rochester. The addresses are 1240, 1252 East Main Street and 4 to 6, 8 to 8 and a half and 10 Laura Street. The request is to establish a 62 space ancillary parking lot that is in excess of 110% of the parking requirement to serve the 20,000 square foot two-story police station and neighborhood service center at 1200 East Main Street. An action requiring city planning commission approval. And I would like to go on record that all present commissioners have visited the site.
Is Lillian there?
I am.
And will you be the only one presenting this evening?
No, I have with me from La Bella Associates, Emily Steinbeck and Bob Steeler. The civil engineer and architect.
Okay, probably do. I will read the affidavit. And if you will respond by giving us your name and then we'll proceed. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name?
Bob Steeler.
Thank you.
Emily Steinbecker, I do.
Thank you.
And I do Lillian Forte.
Thank you, Lillian. All right, you may, may proceed.
Well, hello again. I'm Bob Steeler from La Bella Associates. I'm the civil engineer for the RPD Goodman Section Office and Southeast Neighborhood Service Center project. Emily is the architect today while our Thompson Barry is on vacation. And Lillian Forte is the city project manager for the project. So we saw you guys back in the May planning commission meeting. We were here to, what was the first step of the rezoning process? The rezoning has been approved by the council in June. And so we're here for the next step of the project, which is approval of the ancillary parking lot. Anna, can you bring up a, the next slide? So in summary, we've got a new 20,800 square foot building that will house both the Rochester Police Department Goodman Section as well as the Neighborhood Service Center. It's part of the city's initiative to go return to a neighborhood beat structure where the police and neighborhood service center is kind of a part of the community rather than housed in a central location. The product includes 114 secure parking spaces and 30 public parking spaces. And the next slide we'll get into which, yeah. So the ancillary lots that we're requesting approval for are on the east side of Laura Street to the right of the page. We've got a RPD personal lot. That lot will be secured with six foot tall fencing and an entrance gate. There are actually 32 spaces there. This is an old drawing. And then the public parking lot, 30 spaces on the southeast corner there of Laura Street. So the purpose of this layout was to kind of keep Laura Street open to bicycle and pedestrian traffic. So the Laura Street right away will remain. And then the RPD section Neighborhood Service Center building and 83 of the spaces will be west of Laura Street. That property has been rezoned to commercial. And then the property to the east will include the ancillary parking lots. That is, has been rezoned to R2. Next slide. So this shows the rezoning. This was approved by the council in June 6th, June 16th. As I mentioned, the, so there's 14 lots here. And it has been, it will be combined into two lots. 1200 East Main will be west of Laura Street and 1240 East Main will be east of Laura Street. All the lots on the west side of Laura Street will be commercial, are commercial and the ancillary lots are, are too residential. Next slide, please. This is the summary of the zoning requirements for both sites. 1240 East Main Street is what we're here for tonight. The ancillary parking lots. We do have a parking demand analysis that was developed in conjunction with the city. And I'll just run through those numbers quick. We are providing 43 RPD patrol vehicles, 64 RPD personal vehicles that will accommodate the officers during a shift change. And then we have seven spaces for the net Neighborhood Service Center and then a public lot with 30 spaces. So that parking demand analysis drove the design and the layout. And you'll notice we have 71% lot coverage. The parking demand won't, is not feasible. We can't fit the spaces in under the current zoning. So that's, that's why we're, you know, the parking demand analysis drove that design. I mentioned the secure lot will be surrounded in six foot fencing with the gate on the southeast side for police personal vehicles. The public lot will be unsecured, but will have four foot decorative fencing on both the east side and the south side along Main Street. There's also going to be an RTS bus stop adjacent to that public parking lot. Next slide, please. This just shows some of the building elevations. We went through this in our previous proposal. I guess you can keep going forward. And then here's a couple renderings of what the building will look like. So the ancillary lots are kind of shown in the, you know, in the far far corner of that picture there. One other thing to note is we applied for the green infrastructure grant program for the project. So we received $1.1 million from the DEC. And the RPD secure lot in the ancillary parking lot will be a permeable pavement lot. So that is also been included in our design. A little bit about the product schedule. We've completed our design and bid drawings. I mentioned the city planning commission. We saw you guys in May for the rezoning, which was approved in June by city council. We also received approval of all the variances that were required for the project from the zoning board of appeals on June 18th. And then we're here today for basically the final step in the approval process, approval of the ancillary lot. The project has gone out to bid and we anticipate awarding following the site plan approval and a September construction start lasting approximately one and a half years. I think that's all I have. I'll open it up to any questions anybody has.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Anna, do you have any testimony that was submitted?
No, no testimony.
Okay, that being said, we will close this case and maybe have the next case, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is case number five. The file number is E12021. The applicant is Kyle Little of Daniel Sharp Smart Incorporated. The address is 156 Ames Street. I'm so glad there's only one of them. And the request is to establish a waste station regulated with, regulated medical waste transfer only facility in an existing building. And this is an action requiring city planning commission approval. And I have here that all present commissioners have visited the site.
All right, thank you, Anna. Is Mr. Little there?
Yes. Yes, hello, this is Kyle Little.
Yes, Kyle, I will, is there anyone else that would be, that would be testifying this evening?
Yes, sir. Yep, go ahead, Ben.
This is Ben Gustafson with Hunt Engineers Architects.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, what I'll do, I will swear you in and then just respond by giving us your name and your response to the affidavit. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this hearing is, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Kyle Little, yeah.
Ben Gustafson, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. You may proceed.
Yeah, so again, Kyle Little, I'm the regulatory compliance and safety manager for Daniel's Health. I've been with the company for about seven years. And, you know, again, we're working with, with Ben Gustafson, with Hunt Engineer helping us through the application process. Ben, thank you for all your help. So thank, thank you, first of all, to the planning commission for your time today. We're very eager to work with you all and be a part of the community, ultimately to obtain a special permit to operate a waste station at 156 Ames Street in Rochester. I will start off with doing just a quick background of Daniel's Health and then go into a little bit about the operation. Ben, feel free to chime in and, and perhaps we can go to questions. But, yeah, so Daniel's Health, we, we operate nationally across the United States. We, we've been with, we've been in the US for, for over 20 years. We, we partner with hospitals and healthcare facilities and provide reusable containers for the safe disposal of regulated medical waste. And those containers are specifically designed to prevent potential exposures, you know, while a nurse or a doctor is exposing of material inside. You know, it's, again, it's specifically designed to, to prevent exposure, contamination, et cetera. And again, they, they are reusable, so they do reduce, you know, thousands of pounds of additional plastic from going to a landfill as opposed to your normal, you know, single-use container that, you know, that's made of plastic going right to the landfill. So we really pride ourselves on, on the quality and safety of our containers. They're certified and approved. They're, they're actually made up of ABF plastic, similar to a plastic on your motorcycle helmet, on, on your motorcycle helmet. If any of you guys have a motorcycle at home, but very, very good quality. And, yeah, the, the containers that the regulated medical waste will be in, or I'm sorry, the, the, yeah, the, the medical waste that the containers will be in, the, the containers are, are small and they range from three and a half gallons to up to 200 gallons. But the, the 200 gallon container has a small, is actually made up of the smaller closed containers aside. And, you know, as a company, our, our culture is really all about, you know, reducing exposure, reducing injury and, you know, being as environmentally conscious as possible. So, yeah, a little bit about the company and, and our containers that will be transporting and transferring. The facility itself, it's an existing facility in Rochester. I, I think it's, I think it's less than 6,000 square feet, so relatively smaller to what we're used to, but and, and it will really be used to better service our customers that are specifically in the northeast by, by of course leveraging the facility for logistical efficiencies, et cetera. Right now, we're actually currently servicing our hospitals and healthcare facilities all the way from Eastern PA. So it's, it's, it's quite the, quite the cost and transport, et cetera. So having this facility will, will definitely allow us to better service our customers and, and help us leverage some of those efficiencies. But, so the operation itself, we'll have a couple box trucks. We operate all, all newer trucks. We have full service lease agreements with Ryder, with Penske. But, you know, I think two to three trucks, they'll, they'll range maybe 26 feet long. And essentially the driver, they'll start his or her day in the morning. They'll arrive at the first healthcare facility and drop off clean containers. And while they're there, they will pick up full ones, go to the next stop or the next hospital, drop off clean, pick up full, so on and so forth, until the, the truck is full of containers or the route is over, of course. And transport the containers back to the Rochester Transfer Facility. The, the containers will be offloaded there and they'll be transferred off-site and currently out of state to our permanent Daniel facility in Eastern Pennsylvania within 70 within seventy-two hours, which is a, a rule that we have to follow by. And, yeah, all, all of the containers, again, they're, they're closed, they're locked, they're sealed, they're secure. They're never opened throughout the operation. And, yeah, you know, we, we look forward to hiring a few staff from, from the community. I think maybe a, a couple drivers and some potential warehouse workers as well. But, but again, simply a, a dry facility used to transfer containers. And, yeah, that, that was my overall of, of the company, Daniel's Health and our proposed Rochester-New York transfer station. So, thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you Kyle. Ben, anything that you'd like to add?
I think the couple things we wanted to highlight is, so this is the medical waste transfer station, not doing any treatment on the site. And we're not really doing any processing of the waste. It's taking it off the truck in the enclosed containers, putting it onto a tractor trailer and then removing from the site within seventy, seventy-two hours. The trucks that are used, you know, there's two box trucks a day, so it's very low volume. And these are all enclosed trucks. This is not a, you know, garbage truck or open bed waste transfer station. It's all enclosed, both in the truck and in the medical waste containers. And again, no, no containers are opened or processed on the site. Also, we do not at this time process any hazardous waste on the site as well. It's all medical, regulated medical waste, which is regulated by the DEC. And we're also preparing and working with the DEC to secure permit that helps to oversee and regulate these types of transfer stations.
Anything else?
No.
Alright, that being said, any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question.
Yes, Milton?
Yes, when it comes to security, you said it's nice to stay at the site for seven to two hours. Is any type of security outside, given, you know, the materials that you guys are going to be storing for seven to two hours? Is there any type of security that you guys have in the establishment?
Not yet, but, you know, of course, we will have, you know, locked doors. If there's any material that's stored on a truck, you know, the, the drivers understand to make sure that the truck is locked inside the cab as well as the, the, you know, the roll-up gate in the back. So outside of the, the, the normal security measures that we have in place at really all of our facilities, not yet, but we may have, you know, additional security if, if needed.
Thank, thank you very much. And I'm also, there will be camera. And I'm only asking this because this is medical and obviously we're in the middle of a pandemic. So we have to take a little more pressure as well. Hospitals, do we have cameras outside?
We're, we're, we're early in the process. We do have, we, it's a, it's a common practice that we follow with Daniel that all of our facilities do have cameras. I don't know if there's cameras installed right now, but definitely something that we may look into as we get closer.
Alright, thank you very much.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I, this is Tom Woods with the law department. I just wanted to see if the members had any questions about the justifications for some of the waivers of the positions of the curb cuts and distance from residential zone properties. Or, or maybe they don't have questions because it's obvious from the application, but I just wanted to raise that.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Rebholz, and I have a question. Because one of the requirements is no curb cuts or driveways from a local or collector's street. Suggesting that it really wants a street that's able to take the, the scale of traffic that is, you know, typical of a waste transfer station. So can you describe, I, I know you described two box trucks a day, but it sounds like that's being transferred to a tractor trailer? And describe the maneuvering required for the tractor trailer to access off of Psych Street? Psych Street?
Yeah.
And also the frequency of tractor trailer traffic? Thanks.
Anna, do you mind pulling up one of the site plans that shows the area?
Definitely, one second. How's this one?
Yeah, that, that works. So across the curb cut is on to Psych Street. There's a local street. And across, and so this is an existing manufacturing facility. The location that the site is, is there one that shows the, the actual site layout?
Yes, let me get that for you.
More clear. So our, our location that we're proposing is on this existing manufacturing site, which has two loading docks that are right above that hatched area. It's calling out the two existing loading docks. So those are already positioned for tractor trailer traffic. They're like the, the standard four-foot-high loading dock. They'll come in on Psych Street and then they have two directions on Ames Street that possibly go north, takes you directly to four ninety within about two or three blocks and south takes you to West Ave, which is a minor arterial. So this whole area is generally used for manufacturing and has the type of truck traffic that we're currently, that we're proposing currently operating on it. We said the two twenty-six-foot box trucks per day, the tractor trailer would be anywhere between once every two days to once every three days. So pretty infrequent tractor trailer. Essentially, they'd bring a tractor trailer on site, leave that one there, take the one that is full and then bring that offsite.
So does the tractor trailer have to back in off of Psych Street?
So I believe it would have to back in.
So backing and crossing other sidewalks there?
Yeah, so it'd likely have to back in off Psych Street. I don't believe there's enough room for a turning movement onsite in order to come in and then do a K-turn and then pull in, but it would have to back in. Which is how that, that tractor trailer currently is. You know, we can look at working with the, the property owners, very willing to work with us, those delegated parking spaces. So likely we'd have enough room to turn in and then do a K-turn. You can see there's some existing tractor trailers there. Have to do some turning movements inside. That's something that we could look at. But, you know, based on the current operation of that loading dock is, is how it's currently operates now.
Any other questions, Steve?
No, I have no, no other questions. Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Based on the tractor trailers that are using Psych Street now to access the property, I guess, I'm, I guess I'm kind of wondering, Psych Street is a residential street and they're kind of built to a different structural quality than Ames Street would be built. And I'm basically wondering whether the truck traffic and the tractor trailer trucks on that street are going to basically end up, you know, beating the street up structurally in the process. How, is that looked at?
So I, I can't speak to what level of construction Psych Street is constructed to. There's existing M1 zoning alongside Psych Street. On the north side of Psych Street is zoned residential. But in the 2034 plan, it shows it all as existing manufacturing use. So as to what construction level they did Psych Street, I'm not sure. But I do know that, you know, the current zoning on both, on the south side and the current use on the north side in that area is all manufacturing.
And you know, you don't know what the existing tractor trailer trucks are holding or shipping in and out of that property at this point?
Yeah, there's several uses in that property. I can't speak to the other uses in that property. But as you can see from the aerial images, there's a lot of existing vehicles using that site. As far as the frequency of tractor trailer traffic, based on those other uses, I can't say I know ours will be once every two days to every three days.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none? Anna, do we have any other comments or testimony we received?
No testimony was received, no.
That being said, we will close this case. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, gentlemen. And we'll have the next case, please.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Case number six, file number E-02-20-21. The applicant is Steve DiMarzo of Mark IV Enterprises. The address is eight fifty-four South Clinton Avenue. The zoning district is C2 Community Center. This request is to establish a thirty-space ancillary parking lot that is in excess of one hundred and ten percent of the parking requirement to serve the multifamily dwelling at six twenty-five South Goodman Street, an action requiring city planning commission approval. And all present commissioners have visited the site.
Alright, thank you Anna. Is Mr. DiMarzo there?
Yes, sir. Steve DiMarzo, Chris Nadler, and Brian Powers are present, sir.
Okay, will they also be speaking during the presentation?
Probably just Brian Powers and myself.
Okay, so I will swear you in and then just affirm the swearing in with your name and if you agree or not. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this hearing is the, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
That's Steve DiMarzo?
Brian Powers, yes.
Chris Nadler, yes.
Thank you, Brian. And, yes, sir, you may start.
Well, thank you very much, City Planning Commission. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate your time. As you are probably aware, we just, in March, March first, completed the new construction of six twenty-five South Goodman Street. We had started that project in two thousand, December of two thousand eighteen. Excuse me. It was a very successful construction project, very difficult. I think we did a great job there, working with the neighbors, with the city. Everybody was very accommodating and the project turned out well. The occupancy is also equally doing as well. And we're very excited about that project. So thank you to all those who are involved in that. As part of that initial approval process for that site, we came, we were in front of the various boards of the city and we discussed parking. We, we actually got a variance for parking initially. And basically, we had developed data based on our other existing properties in, in the city of Rochester. Namely, Cornhill Landing, three hundred Alexander. In both of those cases, what we had presented at that time and still today for those properties were accurate. We used that information to determine what our parking requirements would be for six twenty-five. And it turns out today, I'm coming back to say that we were unfortunately inaccurate in the best possible way. I guess every business wishes to have not enough parking for their customers. It's, it's a good problem to have as long as, as long as there's parking available. Part of the problem that we determined in our analysis originally, in this six twenty-five building, there's more two-bedroom apartments. There's, as a, as a ratio compared to the other buildings. In addition to that, about halfway through the approval process, it was determined by the city that there would be no on-street parking allowed on Carjes. And so, really, during the construction process, we were able to utilize the Betlam lot for some of our construction employees' parking needs. But at this time, while we're still, they're still allowing us to use that, thanks Anna, right where that number six twenty-five, it's about half of that lot. It's not that whole thing. What we've determined now is we're, we're short on parking. Luckily, there's this site that's adjacent to our lot. The address is eight fifty-four South Clinton, the big C2 there on your screen. We had purchased this property from Mr. Tricky and we would hope to be able to add enough parking to complete, you know, to then have enough for the site, for the six twenty-five apartment building. The way, the way it would work in essence is if you, if you see the words Carjes Place, Carjes PL, right there is our main entrance into six twenty-five. As you go in from Carjes, right about there, we have an existing gate. Our proposal would be to drive in, for our residents only, to drive in through Carjes, use their access control to get through our existing gate and then enter eight fifty-four, the new parcel that's under discussion tonight, right around where Anna's pointer is. That would then have approximately, how many spaces, Brian? Twenty-six or thirty?
Thirty spaces, but we're going to lose four spaces of the existing parking lot.
So where the entrance, where the, yeah, that's great. Thanks Anna. Right where your, this entrance where Anna's pointer is, we would propose to remove those four spaces, make a connection into the new lot. Again, this all, this is all being one-way traffic towards South Clinton. And erect this parking lot, also with a gate to exit the parking lot onto South Clinton. Brian, would you like to add anything?
Sure. So in addition to the configuration of the parking lot that Steve talked about, we are going to fence the perimeter of the parking lot with a chain link fence, probably of a darker variety fence, not the silver or gray chain link fence you typically see. We'll have lighting in the parking lot that is similar to the lighting that's in the six twenty-five South Goodman parking lot. And we'll also have landscaping, which is also shown on this drawing to enhance the aesthetics of the parking lot. We have a pedestrian access that will come from six twenty-five and lead out to South Clinton Avenue through the parking lot to accommodate and safely accommodate pedestrians. We also have snow storage areas that will be basically the green space that's created between this new parking lot and the six twenty-five South Goodman property. We will maintain the parking lot similar to as we maintain the parking lot at six twenty-five South Goodman. And there is a utility pole in the middle of this current parking area and we will have to relocate that utility pole. We'll work with RGNE to accommodate that. As part of this approval, it's a special permit approval. There are also four waiver requests that we're looking for. First one being the maximum front yard setback is required to be between zero and five feet. And we're proposing nine feet. I assume that's measured off of South Clinton Avenue. The required parking spaces for the zoning are a hundred and four. And currently we have ninety-two available on the South Goodman property. We can exceed or we can go up to a hundred and ten percent of the required parking, which would be a hundred and fourteen spaces. However, with the thirty additional, less the four, we are going to be at a hundred and twenty spaces. And we find that necessary. We did supply a parking demand study to justify that requirement. And then lastly, the aisle widths in our parking lot are measured at twenty-two feet where twenty-four feet is required. Quite frankly, we can typically design parking lots at a twenty-foot aisle width these days. Uh, quite frankly, we can, uh, typically design parking lots at a twenty-foot aisle width these days and don't see a problem with twenty-two feet. Steve, other than that, uh, I don't have anything additional to add.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, does the board have any questions at this point?
Uh, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, we'll, we'll ask the board. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Um, I have a question.
Yes, Richard?
Just regarding, uh, I guess I'm, it's about the one-way traffic through and the need for the curb cut on South Clinton for exiting. Um, as, why that is, I, I guess I'm looking at all of that for, and you're gaining four parking spots, and if you didn't have that, you know, you'd, you'd have parking along where you didn't have that drive going out and you'd maybe have three spots versus four. Um, but you'd have to go two-way traffic on the Cargis Street, or Cargis Place. So can you discuss the thinking behind going to that one-way traffic through your parking?
Yeah, well, I can start and then maybe Brian can, can chime in after. Um, I mean, my, my personal goal for it, um, and I, and I think I would echo that of the, of the neighbors. Um, you know, the whole goal, um, part of the goal for the city, I think, originally to exclude parking on Cargis, uh, is because it is a very small street. You know, for the safety of our, uh, residents and the neighbors, we didn't want this to be a cut-through, a bi-direction cut-through for folks. Um, and so, you know, we felt that it was a good layout. Um, it also controls the parking a little bit better on our side. We can, we can see, you know, better who's coming in and out. Brian, did you have anything to add?
Um, no, it's, the one-way traffic is beneficial, as you said, because of the configuration of Cargis. And not encouraging two-way traffic kind of, kind of up and down that street. I think it's a one-way street now, isn't it?
It is. Does that answer your question, Mr. Mouser?
I get, so you're saying you, you basically are removing the outgoing traffic off of Cargis Street? Because that's early incoming traffic.
Well, the residents, uh, no, not really. I mean, the residents that park in our main parking lot of, of the existing six twenty-five parking lot, that is two-way in and out onto Cargis. Um,
Okay. So, so it's only one way in this lot, or could this lot also go back through to Cargis Street and out?
The way it's currently set up is it's one way out onto South Clinton.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, it's, it seems like it's possible to make that also exit off of, to Cargis Place, right?
To go back through our site? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
It's possible. Do you see a benefit in doing that?
Um, do you see a disadvantage in doing that?
The only disadvantage that I see, um, is this, is the, it would be a further reduction in the number of parking spots that, that are already at a, at a premium. Um, Anna, if you could flip to that other slide there, uh, we do have, along that side, we have four parallel parking spots. There's an existing tree, uh, that the neighbors have requested that we save, and as well as a, an existing park bench. So, you know, without destroying that stuff, um, you know, I guess it's possible. That helps. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, Richard?
No, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
This is Steve Revelles.
Yes, Steve.
More of a question, um, and it has to do with the, um, if you could describe in more detail the configuration of the fence along South Clinton and, um, you know, basically in the front yard area of, of, uh, the South Clinton portion of the lot. But where does the fence run, the, the chain link fence that you described?
The fence will start, uh, in South Clinton on both sides of the driveway and run perpendicular off of South Clinton. We will have a gate, automated, uh, gate at the entrance at South Clinton. So that will prevent people from trying to enter into that one-way driveway. And we don't propose to fence across the frontage of South Clinton Avenue.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. So the fence will run, um, up and down on the page here, on the, on the right-hand side, it runs all the way to the sidewalk?
Correct, correct.
Then on the left-hand side, it also runs all the way to the sidewalk?
Correct.
And, but it's not closed in the front?
It's not closed at the front, but again, there's a gate.
There's a gate.
That will span across the driveway.
It's a, it's a lift gate, uh, Steve, similar, the same type of gate as we have, uh, at this six twenty-five, uh, parking lot entrance currently.
So what's the, um, I guess the, the logic or justification to running the fence all the way out to the sidewalk?
Uh, that was, that was just our first, uh, shot at it. You know, I mean, if it's something that the, the board is not in favor of, then, you know, we would definitely, uh, not be opposed to, to, uh, stopping that shorter of the sidewalk, um, or, you know, some different configuration that the, uh, commission sees fit.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Steve. Any other questions for the applicant? Uh, you, I think you answered my question that I had regarding the, uh, the exit fence. It is a pop-up, uh, fence or pop-up guard that you can access going out, but you can't get in. Is that correct?
Uh, in a vehicle, that's correct, but pedestrians would, would be able to get under it or around it, yes.
Correct, correct. All right, all right. Any other questions for the applicants? Hearing none? We will ask, uh, Anna, any comments that we, that we received after the deadline?
Yes. So, um, I'm going to read two comments that were received after the publication of the staff report. These were sent to the commission members in advance of this hearing. Uh, there were no other comments that were included with the publication of the staff report as there were known, none that were received. So here, we'll start off with ones that are in support. Uh, this is from Reverend Judy Lee Hay of five twenty-eight Benton Street, Rochester, New York, uh, one four six two zero. Dear Planning Commission members, the Spielberg Neighbor Association, S N A, has a few comments in reference to the file number E two twenty twenty-one on the tenth, on the tenth of August, twenty twenty Planning Commission docket. The development of six twenty-five South Goodman has taken an ice around unused state land and turned it into a viable market rate of park, apartments. Together that process, Steve DiMarzo kept us informed and listened to the concerns of the S N A. Together, the S N A and Mark IV had planned an open house, but due to COVID nineteen, the open house had to be canceled. It's refreshing to know that despite the pandemic, the apartments have all been rented, bringing new Spielberg residents into our community. Mark IV's vision to expand the urban choice for housing has paid off, and for that, we compliment them, compliment them on their foresight. In the initial phase of planning for the six twenty-five South Goodman apartment development, many of our Spielberg residents raised an important concern. The number of parking spaces did not seem adequate for the hundred units, nor for our modern lifestyle of relying on cars. So we were surprised at Mark IV's asking for approval for an, so we were, for additional parking lot to accommodate twenty-six cars, given the case they previously made to reduce parking from the required one hundred and four to ninety-two. It seems both Mark IV and the city were shortsighted. The proposed lot has remained fallow and is surrounded by businesses in the C two district, with little or no impact on, on other residential property except Mark IV. With business expansions, parking in South Clinton Avenue is at a premium, so it is wise to have a gate that can only be accessed as an exit by residents at six twenty-five South Goodman property with their key fob. We have some concerns as to how traffic circulation will be affected by the new exit onto South Clinton Avenue. Was there a traffic study to ensure vehicle and pedestrian safety? The new proposed exit onto South Clinton Avenue eliminates a small pocket park with an existing mature tree and a city bench setback from the street. As a result of the new proposed, uh, exit, we ask that the existing mature tree remains, but it cannot, but if it cannot, then a new tree be planted on South Clinton Avenue near to the location of the removed existing mature tree. Additionally, we asked that either Mark IV or the city of Rochester move the existing bench to another location, either on South Clinton Avenue or to Otto Hedenberg Park. And if possible, that the bench is set back from the street in a similar fashion as it is now to enhance both green space and to add a, add pedestrian conversations and respite. We suggest that the proposed lighting of the additional parking space be consistent with the existing six twenty-five South Goodman development and that it has no detrimental influence on the adjacent properties, especially to the one residential home. We are curious as to how the additional parking lot will be maintained and by whom. Where is the proposed storage of snow in the winter? Snow should not be pushed onto the sidewalk where the driveway enters South Clinton Avenue. We ask that care should be taken with an enhanced landscaping to minimize the visual impact the additional lot may have on the character of South Clinton. The South Clinton Merchants Association, Spielberg Neighbor Association, and the Highland Park Neighbor Association with the city are working to beautify South Clinton as one of the city's major arterials. Thus minimizing the visual impact from South Clinton Avenue with enhanced landscape screening will be essential. Our other regret was that the timing of the proposal did not allow for the project to be presented to the July twenty twenty meeting of N B N six for broader community dialogue. We are wary of more parking lots on a major hub, but given the location, its lack of use, and the need for residential parking for six twenty-five South Goodman Street, we support the project. And then we have one comment that was received after the publication of the staff report that is in opposition. And this is from Jerry Levitas, uh, who provided us with a P O box. I am the owner of the South Wedge Diner at eight eighty South Clinton Ave and other parcels east of eight fifty-four South Clinton Ave and six twenty, and south of six twenty-five South Goodman Street. My family has owned property and operated businesses there since the mid-seventies. I am also a former owner of the parcel in question at eight fifty-four South Clinton Ave. My overall opinion of the six twenty-five South Goodman development to date is a positive one. I believe the project has enhanced the neighborhood. I believe adding additional parking at eight fifty-four South Clinton will be a further improvement. I don't know the full scope of eight fifty-four parking proposal and have seen no plans at this time, but I have a wish of, list of items I hope are being considered. Two-way access to and from South Clinton Ave. I am in favor of cutting the curb to allow two-way access to and from South Clinton. I believe it would greatly help alleviate congestion on Cargis Place. In the past, the eight fifty-four parcel was accessible from Clinton. Cargis Place is now the only way for all vehicles entering and exiting the six twenty-five South Goodman complex. Cargis Place is also, is a narrow one-way, one-lane street with residences and driveways on both sides and parked cars on one side of the street. Currently, all vehicles exiting the complex must travel one way in South Cargis, uh, one way south on Cargis Place to the corner at South Clinton. There is currently a flashing red light at this corner. Turning onto South Clinton can be problematic with limited visibility of westbound Clinton traffic due to parked cars, often illegally, in front of eight ninety South Clinton building, as well as periodic high traffic volumes. Just gonna.
This is Tom Worth. Could I just ask that everyone that's not, um, speaking to, uh, put their, uh, mics on mute, and I think we prevent the feedback that Anna's getting.
I just use my special host powers to mute that person. The timing of the occupation of six twenty-five South Goodman has just happened to coincide with COVID nineteen's restrictions and areas' business closures. We haven't seen the traffic flows and parking shortages that have historically been experienced in this area, but I expect more congestion at this corner in the future. I have often observed traffic cutting the corner, often speeding, using Cargis Place to avoid the congested five-way intersection of Henrietta Street, South Goodman, and South Clinton. Two-way access would significantly improve the ability of emergency vehicles to enter the site as well as better access for moving vans, utility trucks, refuse trucks, that are now totally reliant on Cargis Place. A pet peeve. I see that some tenants of six twenty-five South Goodman regularly walk dogs in the area, and management has installed pro, a proper dogway station. I feel that most tenants are taking the responsibility to clean up their, after the dogs. That said, currently, grass here is in short supply. There are no grass strips between sidewalk and curb, and my small lawns are some of the first available. I think six twenty-five Goodman tenants would welcome some lawn areas in the plan for eight fifty-four South Clinton to provide more onsite options. Some lawn areas or free space for snow removal could also be useful. Perimeter fencing. I would like to hear about the plans, about the plans are for fencing, especially on our common borders. Utility pool. As one looks at the power, telephone, and cable lines strewn across the eight fifty-four property, it's hard to imagine why a utility pool was positioned there. Where were the old buildings that once served? I would be in favor of any streamlining or relocation of utilities to serve the current needs of all involved, and there are many. To date, I think Mr. DiMarzo and the Mark IV team have executed a complex project very well. I look forward to any future improvements in regards to the neighborhood. Thanks to everyone for allowing me to express my concerns and opinions. And that concludes the public comments on this one. I think you're mute, you muted, Dave.
I am. Uh, the applicant has an opportunity to provide any additional information, uh, if he wished, based on the testimony that was just read.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, it's, it sounded like both of those, uh, public comments were in favor of the lot. Uh, with regard to, uh, the utility pole, Brian addressed that, uh, snow storage. We do have, uh, the, uh, medians on the site map, if you don't mind pulling that up, Anna. Um, I think our maintenance of our properties in the city of Rochester speaks for itself. Uh, we've been, we've been working in around, uh, downtown now for probably close to fifty years, and, uh, I think we have a pretty good track record with regard to that. Um, our staff will be maintaining this lot in addition to the six twenty-five lot. And, uh, what did I miss? Brian, did I miss something? Members of the board, did I miss something?
The brain's on mute.
Sorry about that. That's not me, is it? I'll try again. So the storm drainage from the new parking lot is going to drain into the existing, uh, parking lot drainage for six twenty-five Goodman. So we will not be adding to stormwater going out onto South Clinton Avenue or affecting any of the adjacent properties around us.
Uh, one more thing that I think Mr. Levitas, uh, had mentioned, um, with regard to the two-way and emergency vehicles coming off of South Clinton. Um, I mean, the gates that we install for, for, uh, the vehicle access, uh, typically, they run those over. They're meant to be, they're crash gates. They're, they're meant to be run into, uh, if they needed to go into this, uh, project from, from South Clinton, they would be able to do that from that site as well.
All right, anything else, gentlemen?
Uh, this is Tom Worth from the Law Department. Uh, with regard to the twenty-two foot in place of twenty-four foot aisles, um, was there any communication with the fire department about that or whether that was of concern to them?
Um, I have not spoken with the, with the fire marshal, sir.
And it's all I have.
Anything else, Tom?
No, that's it.
Good. Gentlemen, anything else you'd like to add?
Mr. Watson, may I just add something?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this, um, obviously is going through the site plan review process, and the fire marshal sit at the table for site plan review. And I do not believe, uh, we have received any comments on this.
Okay. So that's to be determined.
Correct. Uh, I might just add one thing with, again, with, with vehicular access off of Cargis. Correct. I might just add one thing with, again, with, with vehicular access off of Cargis. The fire truck can easily go through our existing 625 parking lot and, and out towards South Clinton, in my opinion, and be able to access, you know, have pretty much full access. But we're open to any comments the fire marshal might have.
All right. Anything else, gentlemen?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And this case is closed. And this hearing is closed. So I'd like to ask the commissioners, would you like to take a 15-minute break? And then we'll, then we'll come back at 8:30 to talk about the cases? All right, we'll do that. We'll return here at 8:30 to deliberate. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen.